This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call to order the regular March 4th, 2024 council meeting to order at 7:00 PM. I'll rise for the place allegiance.
A place allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, founded by God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any additions or corrections? See the agenda?
I have none.
Your motion to accept the agenda.
Go move, Mr. Mayor.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Norman.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Any presentations? None? No mayor's report tonight. Any council committee meeting reports?
We're just counseled for lack of corner.
What was it? Okay. Any topics on the floor? None? Cassette Jennifer acceptance, Cassette Jennifer approval, city council meeting minutes for February 20th, 2024, plus city council meeting minutes for February 21st, 2024. Any questions or discussions on those two meetings? You would like to make a motion except? Those for approval.
Motion except the consent agenda for approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilor Ash.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Any unfinished business? Well, moving right into new business. Fiscal year 2024 dash 2025 budget calendar, page six. Oh, schedule there. So at this meeting, we're we're tasked to appoint a budget officer, and usually in the past, it's been Josette Mitchell, our city administrator. I take it we need a motion to for that tonight, or before I call for a motion on that candidate. Is there anyone else that would like to make a motion for? Or step up to be the officer for that? I didn't want to get ahead of myself. So doesn't look appear to be. So would you accept that?
Yes.
Is that okay?
I'll move to appoint Josette Mitchell as our 2024-2025 budget officer.
Wonderful. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilor Norman.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Okay. Of course, we're going to meet at the senior center. That was that. Any questions about our calendar before I move on? Has the Budget Committee been set? I mean, do you have?
We'll have some openings, I think.
Oh, you do?
One. Oh.
Three openings?
Oh, three?
Nope, we have Sheila.
Joan.
Sheila and Joan.
Oh, so then we have three.
That we have to fill? No, we don't have.
Fire or no? You don't have to, but you try to have it balanced, citizens and councils. So we have three citizen openings.
Okay.
If anyone's interested. Before May 7th.
Well, it looks like we have some time. Maybe Scott could put out a
Oh, I was saying we could just.
Bulletin, you know, there is an opening there on Budget Committee if anyone wants to serve.
I'll send you a blurb tomorrow, Scott.
Okay.
I'll try to remember.
I'll send you a reminder.
Okay, thank you.
What about the kids?
John, hi.
So watch yourself. Shots.
I think you can undo the contract.
Okay, so just be aware, in March, it gets going again pretty good, and then in April, and of course, in May.
Yep.
Okay, business from the departments. Ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance number 943, alley vacation. Vacate 23 dash 02. Ordinance number 944, alley vacation, vacate 23 dash 03.
Should be ordinance 943 first, but yeah, so we'll do one at a time.
Okay, yeah.
All right, so what you have before you is an ordinance adopting the vacation that we had the public hearing for last council meeting. If you guys are unanimous, we can do two readings today. If you're not, then we'll do it over a couple of meetings. Up to you. Process would be somebody would make a motion to adopt ordinance, and then as titled, somebody would second it. Carry the motion, then I would ask, I'll do the reading, and then we'll do it again. Four times, because there's two ordinances.
So ordinance number 943, which alley is this? Remind us of this again.
This one is the one up on Louisiana Avenue.
Correct. Yep. Well, I'm in favor of moving forward. Everyone else?
Yes.
All right, I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make motion that we adopt ordinance number 943. An ordinance of the city of Vernonia vacating the platted and unconstructed alley of block 17, first addition of the town of Vernonia.
I'll second. Okay, Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Motion carried. All right, would anybody like to hear this ordinance read in full? Hearing no such request, this is the first reading of ordinance number 943 by title only. An ordinance of the city of Vernonia vacating the platted and unconstructed alley of block 17, first addition of the town of Vernonia.
All right, now you need a second motion.
Yep.
I'll make a second motion, Mr. Mayor, that adopt ordinance number 943. An ordinance of the city of Vernonia vacating the platted and unconstructed alley of block 17, first addition of the town of Vernonia.
Very good. Is there a second?
I will second.
Second by Councilor Ash.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Anyone like to have this ordinance in full? Hearing no such request, this is the second reading of ordinance number 943. An ordinance of the city of Vernonia vacating the platted and unconstructed alley of block 17, first addition of the city, or sorry, of the town of Vernonia. This ordinance will be effective in 30 days.
Okay. Congratulations. Okay, ordinance number 944.
And reminder, this is the unconstructed alley that's over here by the blinking light behind the garage.
Correct. That crosses the creek.
It stops.
Kinda.
But yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But.
Okay, I will move to adopt ordinance number 944. An ordinance of the city of Vernonia vacating a portion of the platted and unconstructed alley of block 3, rose addition to Vernonia.
No town? Is there a second?
No town. It's the legal description.
Second.
Second by Councilor Norman.
All right, Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Motion carried. Eddie, any counselor wish to hear this ordinance right in full? Hearing no such request, this is the first reading of ordinance number 944. An ordinance of the city of Vernonia vacating a portion of the platted and unconstructed alley of block 3, rose addition to Vernonia.
Okay, I will move to adopt ordinance number 944. An ordinance of the city of Vernonia vacating a portion of the platted and unconstructed alley of block 3, rose addition to Vernonia.
So moved. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilor Norman, second.
Councilor Ash?
Aye.
Councilor Webb?
Aye.
Mayor Hobart?
Aye.
Councilor Norman?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Aye.
And would any counselor wish to hear this ordinance right in full? Hearing no such request, this is the second reading of ordinance number 944 by title only. An ordinance of the city of Vernonia vacating a portion of the platted and unconstructed alley of block 3, rose addition to Vernonia. This ordinance will be in effect in 30 days.
Wonderful. Again, congratulations to Randall Ward.
Yeah.
We're getting pretty good at this, aren't we?
Thank you for not making me read all of it.
Oh, you're very welcome. Correspondence, save the date, city-county dinner, page 13.
So what you have before you is invitation to the city of Vernonia hosted quarterly city-county dinner. I'm working on all the details right now, but this is just getting the date on your guys' calendars.
All right. Stephanie, I see you have 901 Park Drive at the scout cabin. And Josette and I have talked about this before.
Found out a reason we can't do it, because we're taking money. We were able to do budget meetings there, committee meetings there, but for the first five years, we can't do a hosted thing where we charge money at the Rose Avenue per the CDBG.
Okay.
So it's not have to be at cabin, and then next time, well, next year, we'll be able to probably do it.
That's disappointing, because it's a beautiful building. We could, I would love to show that off to the rest of the cities, huh? Shoot. Well, that is what it is.
I know. The seniors are ready for that restriction to come off too, because they could do fundraisers there and a lot of things there.
And then I think there's only left another year.
Yeah.
Believe that, and then after that year, 60 and below are welcome.
Yeah, but then they could even invite others. It's that first five years that you're really restricted from having anyone for fee service that's there that's under 60.
Maybe just a suggestion for invitations to go out, of course, to all the cities and mayors and council, but.
Stephanie got the list from.
Helped already.
Yeah.
Oh.
If there's anybody, can they see use on it on their email?
Um, no, because you guys got it here. I sent the save the date to.
So we can show you the list of who.
Okay.
One of the cities had a whole bunch of people that were specific to their PUDs and their, and we didn't want to do that, because that becomes a lot of people. So, because like Clatska and I did the Clatska and I PUD, all the members of the Clatska and I Rural Fire Department, and that becomes like an exhaustive list to try and get their, so we took those off, but we kept most of the ones that are the players for everybody.
I have 60 people on my list.
Okay.
But you can look at, we can show you it.
Just an idea I thought of, because Vernonia is right in the middle of the CZ Trail and the Banks Leonard Trail in the summertime, and there's a lot of tourism here. And I've noticed an increase in our small businesses lately in our community. So I just thought that Sierra Trass or Paul Vogel would be good speakers.
Yeah.
Okay.
We kept people that are participating. We were maybe thinking, maybe they could discuss the CZ Trail, since we don't have something other than the CZ Trail that kind of connects us to the other cities in a way. I don't know that they want to hear about our sewer project as a speaker, so maybe we could get somebody like Katie or somebody to Trail Happenings or Connectivity, unless you guys have another idea of a speaker, because it really is supposed to be on some project or statewide initiative, or something that's bigger than just us, kind of.
Maybe our new campground would be a good topic, and maybe Travel Oregon or Paul Vogel would be part of that, maybe, discussion.
So we'll have the like roundtable, what's going on in your cities.
Okay.
It's normal, but there's usually like a keynote.
Yeah, we've seen the invitations that there's like a speaker, but we're not.
There have been in the last two I've attended.
Yeah.
That Donald and I have attended, there have, there have been speakers.
Yeah.
I don't remember who we had. It might have been Betsy or something.
We're trying to figure out what would our speech be for Vernonia, other than our normal, hey, this is what we're doing in our town, but like not a speaker.
Yeah.
So our thought was we were going to invite Casey Garrett, and then he can put together something on the CZ Trail Happenings, because I know a lot's been going on.
Sure.
Yeah.
Connectivity.
Be good.
Okay.
Well, we have a little time.
Yeah, so if you guys come up with a different thing you want, we're just not sure how much we can, oh.
Go ahead.
What do you got?
The legislature just amended measure 110. That was somewhat involved in, that might be of interest to people, it might.
The last, especially the last meeting in Clatska and I.
I don't know, please, just.
Betsy talked quite a bit about it, and I think at this point, nobody knows what the future is going to look like with that.
They just adopted something, though.
Yeah, well, they, they voted, legislature voted to re-criminalize it, a misdemeanor. So, but, yeah, we.
We can kind of pick their, Casey's brain, like, do you have a lot to talk, or maybe Sierra wants to talk to all the cities about her plans for the summer season of small businesses in each town and the keep it local. We don't know. We just know, we don't really have like a topic that we thought would be super poignant for anybody.
My idea was just to, you know, if we were going to have a speaker, to have Sierra talk to us.
Yeah, so I'll talk to Casey and Sierra and see.
Okay.
If one of them is willing to kind of share.
Yep.
And Casey did call about the letter, mayor.
Oh.
Yeah, so I sent him a template, and he's doing one for us.
Awesome. Okay, any other questions about the dinner? Hope to see Dale there. He shouldn't be able to make it.
Yeah, I think he probably will be able to make it, hopefully.
He's a homebody. Yeah.
It was snowed down.
Moving right into the city administrative report.
Okay, so not much has changed in the last two weeks since our last meeting as far as other agencies. So the testing, I'm still waiting to hear from them when the funds can become available for testing the old dump well up there off Nokes. The SCA ODOT grant, we were, I believe we finally have, if we don't have it yet, we're about to have the bid from Five Star, because they came last week and walked all the sites, and that was our last, we needed one more bid. And then I don't know that Jeff's gotten the guy from Washington, this chip sealer, to come walk the tree streets with them yet. I only saw him for like a minute, running out with snow, my goodness. We finally got our signed contracts, so we can put out our bid request for the docs grant. So I've done that, waiting to hear back from those three companies. ADA, as I mentioned to you guys last time, we're having them pay the appraisal price for our properties, so that can offset the adjustment cost for the contractor to adjust our infrastructure lids and stuff as they need to near the ramps. The SOQ, we had two responses for the grant administration.
Yep.
Two responses for the grant administration, and I don't believe that those have even been qualified yet, right?
No.
Shouldn't.
They're really due on Thursday, I think.
Lakeview Sewer Project, we finally got all but one house, the plumber got under, for the one house that didn't answer the door, he's just overestimating the pipe length that he needs, and I'm waiting on the bid. I had a perk on my tablet today to call him, and I didn't get it done by 5:00, so I'm going to call him tomorrow morning, be like, hey, you were out here last week, where's my bid, so we can get the schedule. But they said there weren't any weird scary versions, pretty simple. And then while they're under there hooking up each house, they're going to be, once all the houses are unhooked, they're going to go back and fill the line that exists under the homes, so it doesn't collapse, cause any settling or anything. They'll either, they said there's like a quick creep they can fill it with to just decommission it. You either do that or you flatten it, and since it's under the homes, the flattening's on that, just so you don't get any weird s- ass, if it's weirdly connected to something we don't know, you just block all of that. Oh, sorry.
That's a good call.
Oh, okay.
Sorry.
I thought you were saying something and needed me to. DEQ upcoming permit, so I've sent on to Ruben. You guys asked for them too. Sorry. I sent him the new draft permit and our current existing permit, but you guys had asked that, go to Public Works, and you too. I gotta write myself a note real quick. Okay. So yeah, we're just waiting to see, he had his feelers out for a couple of firms, but I haven't heard back from him. That was last Friday. There was something else that popped in my brain that's not on here. Now I'm trying to think of what it is. I'll think of it. Electrical projects have kind of stalled with the weather. Blake hasn't been back out to finish the entrance sign. Blue Mountain's still pushing back, and I'm almost to the point where I might just say, just give us the cameras, we'll install everything, just deliver the cameras to us, because Mitch went and like troubleshooted the scout cabin camera and hooked up new ones there, he's hooked up new one, so we have some skill where we're not so afraid of cameras. So I'm going to kind of put the pressure to him, because this is like a year and a half now, since they said, oh, we can get you those. And that was like eight months before when they said it originally, so we'll just put up our own, because there's been damage happening in the parks with what we think is a machete. Like it's cuts into it where it looks like the fat edge of a machete to the pay station, to one of the doors in the bathroom, to the soap dispenser. Yeah. And then you have the upcoming meetings, March 18th, April 1st, and April 15th. And I'm feeling like, did we miss a quarterly meeting, or is that in April? We didn't have one yet.
I do need.
We had one this year, so.
We have that.
Why?
We did.
Oh, when we redid the calendar, so we're, but we're due like in April, I think, right?
I have to look.
Because we do it every three months.
Are we due in April?
Yeah, okay, so I don't have that on here, but we'll look and.
I do need you guys to send me availability for April meetings, otherwise I might hide that in your quarterly.
Okay. Oh, that's.
Just email me or call me tomorrow with dates you are not available, and I'm going to get a stack.
In April.
Yeah. That was the.
Email or call.
And that's for what, Stephanie, you work on?
Meeting. Executive session.
Okay.
The thing that I wanted to bring up, that we did just get notification on, is Winterbrook and I will be attending the next Wednesday, the hearing for the UGB, and if they pass the MAP amendment, then they'll be brought in, they'll change everything, and they'll be finalized. So next Wednesday at 10:00, I go to that.
County.
Yeah. Something else. It's hard when I do these like the week before, and then something happens today or last Friday. The manholes, we got three good days, and really our goal is the 80 hours, right? 10 days, 10 eight-hour days, so we're just keeping track. Then they had to pull off to do something, and then we had weather, so they'll be coming back to finish it. But the guys said they were learning a lot. They think it's very doable for them. I said, get all the equipment figured out, so that we can be putting that into the budget, so we can continue with the less difficult ones or the hard ones, depending on.
The curtain grounding?
Yeah, so Jeff did notice weirdly that the big heavy rain that came right after it, everything stayed in its, in the belagio, didn't come above it. But then the next morning, Dennis said he popped the cleanup.
Dennis? He's got a backflow.
Mm-hmm, I think it's because they couldn't flush during the heavy rain. But at what point, I'm starting to get kind of frustrated, because at some point, we're not actually overflowing if they have like, does that make sense? Like, yes, they have a backstop, so it can't back pressure, but when there's sinks or whatever, they keep living normal life, and then they can't do it. I don't know why you would go pop it for the sewer to come out on your own property, but that's what's happening. And I don't know how responsible we can be for that, if it's, and it's usually like a heavy rain moment. It's not even hours.
With that snow melt plus that heavy rain, I was wondering if we were going to have a need.
Yeah, they checked everything, and there was no overflow in any of that area. And then I got into my office, and Dennis sent me an email like 20 minutes into the day, hey, there was overflow, and I was like, that's weird, it didn't overflow Clatska. And then he said, well, I popped it. My goodness, okay, so the guys went up and treated it, but I don't know how we solve that, short of the whole thing being solved.
Well.
But we can't keep incurring fines, because someone's doing something, I don't know. It's a weird conundrum. I get it, they're inconvenienced, but when it comes with the tune of like $7,500 a pop when we get caught doing that, we're not really doing that. So at some point, I don't know what discussion to have. There's got to be some discussion.
So have they done all the manholes on the hill yet?
They did, that's where they started, and they said they did notice that that kept, they popped the belagio, and it was good under, so it was helping, it was coming to it, but it's keeping back pressure on that flapper.
Yeah.
Same kind of issue happened on Saturday or on Sunday at the fire department. Remember like a few months ago, Rob came, Rob called, and I think I informed you guys that they had had sewer coming up their floor drains in the bays, and we knew, we went and popped all the manholes, and it wasn't our manholes. They have a system that kind of captures it and then sump pumps it, but their pump wasn't keeping up, and they thought maybe they had some rain drains connected. Well, that information didn't get passed over to interim chief warning, so he called kind of like, hey, city, do something, right? And so Chris was the one on, and Chris is like, I don't know enough about this. It wasn't him that went to pop the manholes, so we had a discussion and have told him, and they were clearing snow off there today, but they really need to either upsize their pump, unconnect the rain drains, or both would be our preference, so we're working that out, but.
Yeah, because they got, they got apron all the way around, it'll just go to the storm drain, it shouldn't be in our sewer.
It might not be the actual downspouts, it might be something else connected from that roof to the, because the front downspout closest to the museum comes down and shoots out onto the pavement.
Yeah.
But it had no water coming out of it today. And the whole roof was covered in snow, so I don't know if that was an ice jam, kind of ice dam or whatever, or if it's really not getting the water to that pipe, I don't know, but they're investigating, so that should be good.
Yeah. Cause last wonder about when we had a bad storm, they had issues.
Yeah. And it seems like they didn't address the issues the same. So either it didn't get addressed under the prior chief or they're in the middle of it when all the stuff went down, or some somehow didn't get addressed. But Five Star was out there today. So I think they're, that's who was up on the roof. Cause Five Star is doing their kind of reconfiguring of the offices or won the contract to do the reconfiguring. Where they're moving that big room we all kind of used to hang out in and making it into different spaces. I don't know if that's still happening, but I'm assuming so.
Thing, I'm guessing because they've had leaky roof problems, they're probably trying to fix the leaky roof.
Yeah.
Before they can do anything inside.
Yeah. But I know Five Star's the contractor that had, got that contract when they.
Yeah. The earthquake company they were supposed to be doing.
Yeah. They had multiple things and some weird kind of office making in that room. I don't know. I didn't ever see the plans. I just heard of it. Yeah.
Does that go through art planning or does that go to county? Cause it's commercial.
No, it was here. I don't recall receiving those.
I don't think they've started that project yet. I think they'd awarded the contract and then stuff started happening in the department. And so it didn't get like full on. I saw him do a few walkthroughs, but never a guy there with materials or anything. So I don't think it's come. They were probably planning. But I'm meeting with Five Star tomorrow. So I'll ask him. Hey, don't forget, you need to turn any permits.
Just a city memory. It's been a while, but it's not ringing a bell.
Yeah.
Recently. So.
Oh, that's, I am meeting with Five Star to try and work to solve the senior condensation problem up above their. I got a call. One of them asked, can we take the compressor off and put it on the roof? I said, you realize when you remove that, there's gonna be a big hole in your freezer. Oh, never mind. But Terry from the estimator from Five Star is meeting me. We're just gonna get an intake from the roof, cold water or cold air in with some sort of temperature gate kicks it on. And then an exhaust fan on the other side and get air flowing through there. So they should quit having the icicle problem. Cause the condensation sits on that condensation, the kind of weird vent, metal vent, and it drips down. And then in the freezer side, it starts to become icicles, but then the fan's trying to spin and the fan hits the icicle. More airflow is necessary.
Did the water pressure situation there ever get?
Yes. So we went and did investigations with Five Star because they built it. And they did a whole bunch of testing on the phone with the company. And the technician says, oh, that's a manufacturer's internal error. So we got a brand new $7,000 instant hot water heater installed.
Nice.
Yeah.
Cool.
There, got lots of hot water. The phantom thing finally showed itself. We couldn't make it do it.
Yeah.
And Chris or Teresa thought she was crazy. Like she's like, it's not getting hot. I don't know why it's doing it when you guys are here. But we figured it out. We ran enough stuff to bleed all the lines to then have it show up. And then they figured out that when they took off everything, there was like a little teeny drip coming down and that's a crack in somewhere in the manifold that's a manufacturer defect. So.
Glad we caught it in time.
Right? On warranty. We're like, hey, this thing got put in three years ago, but it was only really running for the last two years. So.
Do we have an expectation for when we'll get the 60%?
I have it in my office.
I say it must be all coming quick if he's planning to be done by.
Yeah. So I can email that to you guys too, tomorrow, the draft new kind of tweak to the campground. That's what you're talking about?
What's the plan for approving that? Is that just Parks Committee decision? Or are we having another?
Well, so since it is 60, there's still room to wiggle. You're just giving them the idea and the the estimation of why it's costing, why you're asking for that much money. Doesn't have to, they're never gonna come and check every little, oh, this is a 90 degree corner and now it's 77 or anything like that. But yeah, if council likes, he addressed all the issues we asked for. And if you guys like it and Parks likes it, I think I can still get to the Parks meeting before I have to to talk to, have Parks, I'll email it to all of you again.
Before you have to turn in the grant application?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause it's online. So it's.
He's not planning to have the 90 by the grant application.
No, he's planning on having the infrastructure with the primitive plan and the 60% iteration and the cost estimate. Those are the three things I need for the grant. And then I've been out getting letters of support. The mayor talked to Casey Garrett with the CZ Trail at the last county dinner kind of thing. So he's writing us one, the connectivity and the extra camping sites will be really, you know, a good fluff and stuff letter. But yeah.
Appreciating for our letters for the CZ Trail.
Yes. That's what you do. I write you a letter of support. Now I need one. Should be good.
On the ADA ramps. That 21K, well, it won't be 21, maybe about eight.
Yes.
So that's in lieu of our people doing the work, but are we gonna still need somebody there to kind of keep an eye on what they're doing? You don't think we'll need oversight?
They were all identified in the, in the conflict map. So Jeff went to each element. And yeah, they're just, they're, it's the same element. It's just coming up or down, right?
Is that all it is?
Yeah. It's adjustment or protect in place where we wouldn't have to go out there and throw and do all the, because it's gonna most likely be right in the middle of kind of our best work window to get any extra meters in, get all the things.
I just didn't want to get to the end of it and then boys go out there and go, what did they do?
No, it's, it had pretty detailed specs and they reviewed them all.
Okay.
Jeff and Chris did. For what it's gonna.
So dots on the hook if they do it wrong, right?
Yeah. Be like.
If they happen to do it four or five times.
You know, because if it has to meet in that ramp profile, it can't even be a teeny bit up. It's gotta be pretty tight. And that's also what I thought would lead to a lot of time of us standing around waiting. And that, yeah.
Yeah.
So on the pump, go, keep going Dale, if you're not done.
No, no, go ahead. I'm just saying we're.
Which pump?
We went through it.
The well.
Yes.
Is there a pump in there? Is there no pump? There no power there to make the pump run?
There's a pump system. What it looks like is after so many years of no use, the vermin kind of chewed, chewed around with stuff. So it would be kind of going in there from the beginning and kind of figuring out how to fix her pumping system.
But all they need is some water to test the water, don't they? Or they need it to pump all the way to her house?
No, they need it to pump from wherever it is down in the ground up. And so I showed him, hey, you can drive basically in dry weather, you can drive right to this. So you don't need like, you know, I sent him maps and distances, like you could pull right up with a vehicle to this. You don't. So I don't know what he's, what their test, how their test has to be administered for it to, for them to accept the results. I don't know what kind, if it's just sending a bladder down to get a test, I don't know what their testing regime is.
I mean, if it needed power and there's none there.
Yeah.
We hook a generator up, make a pump so they can get the water to do the test?
I'd have to have like somebody that's an electrician fix how, make sure the power's good before I tried to hook a generator up. And I didn't know if we wanted to outlay money. I don't know.
Well, just.
Yeah. I'll keep it in mind though. When I talk to him, if he says, oh, it's this problem, I'll say, well, it might be cheaper for us just to pay an electrician to go get the wiring straight and plug that thing into my Honda generator, right? I mean, if it's gonna take forever, we'd like this off our list.
Yeah. And that's what I'm trying, is there a way we can make this work out so we can get it over with?
Yeah. Okay. Well, I'll ask him.
Yeah. You could just pigtail the wire. It's gotta be a submersible down there. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I think it's a.
You could say for your power down.
It's just, there was a lot of duff and dander in the box. Like when you open the thing, like things had been messing with that panel for a while. And Mitch tried a few things and had a little voltage thing testing, you know, do I have anything? And he's like, I think they did a number on this thing. I can't get it to, I can't even figure out what would need to be connected to what at this point.
Okay. And unfortunately last Wednesday, the food truck backed into our seniors sign at, on the Wheat Avenue side.
Yeah.
Of the, and kind of broke it. And you're aware of it.
I got a call from Alex. He goes, so it sounds like I owe you a sign. Columbia Pacific Food Bank's driver. He just backed, backed into the, used the apron of the driveway as, and he didn't realize his tire wasn't hitting, but his box was sticking over the curb and ran into the sign.
Yeah.
So I'm getting an estimate from a champion.
Okay.
Cost. Yeah.
Anything else? Thank you, Josette.
Yep.
Items on the mayor and councils. Be my turn this month to recognize the citizen in the next meeting on the 18th. So I'll do that. I don't have anything else, I think, this time. Anybody? Dale?
Oh, did get the forest be classed down to the McNair Forest. And experimental. And yeah, I was, they picked one of the best days of the year to go plant trees. I stepped on the bus. I says, today's lesson is you're gonna learn that you probably don't want to be a tree planner for.
In the Pacific Northwest.
That you want to be that supervisor or somebody that plans it or or sits in the pickup and says, go plant over there. Yeah, we got, I don't know. I grabbed about nine tubes. I think they probably tubed about 60 trees, probably planted about 70 or so there. There's a, there's an attention span period of time there, but they did a good job.
You were.
Even Benassi said that.
Dissection?
It's just, well, it was a pretty nasty day. And so yeah, even Donna, she says, oh, I got some black garbage bags. You better take them with you. About two thirds of them. They wanted one.
Just poke a hole in the bottom and put it over?
Yeah, over their head, arms out. And so yeah, no, we, they did good. We're talking about trying to hit it again, although extended forecast that day doesn't look any better. But but we pretty much got all the trees planted that died in our first planting. But then I talked to you about planting some more along the trail.
Yeah.
And then I need to do some infill on aura. We lost kind of in some spots up there.
Okay.
Could use some fruit trees back in it. So.
Good.
Try to get her done.
All right.
Thank you, Dale. Is that it? Okay. Action item summary.
So staff is going to send the permit and the current permit to council and the public works committee. And then send council and the Parks Committee, the 60% draft map that I got from John. And then look into, can we just do some electrical work on the well pump on NOX to speed that along? I'm missing something else? Council's gonna send Stephanie an email with your unavailable dates for April.
I already did.
Okay.
And you were gonna distribute the 60% campground design?
Yeah, that's what I said.
Did you say that?
That's okay. I'm here.
Okay. I will adjourn this meeting at 7:44. Meeting adjourned.